Am I clear enough?
Audio voice.
Clear. Sadha Shiva Samaranam Dham. Shankara Char Jyamadhya Mam. Asmadacharya Parjantam. Vandey Guru Paramparam. Om Sahana Bhavatu Sahanaubhunattu Sahabirjan Karava Vahi. Tejasvinaavathita Mastumavitvishava Vahi. Om Shanti Shanti Shantihi. Namaste to all of you. On this occasion of Adi Shankara Jaianti. We are very blessed to have in our midst. Swami Dratma Vedantandaji from Mumbai. He is originally from Chedam Mangalam, a village called Chedam Mangalam in Trisur in Kerala. And Purva Shrama, they got settled in Mumbai long ago, years ago. And so, so he did his, all his schooling in Mumbai. And then at that time, hardly when he had finished high school, he, Swami Vedantandaji was teaching in Sandipadi in Chennai mission in Mumbai. So that's how, and Swamiji was giving public talks and so Swami Brahma Vedantandaji had a chance at that time to get exposed to the teachings of Vedanta to Swamiji. And then from a professional perspective, Swamiji was, was a marine engineer. And so in that, that job, he, he had travelled to many parts of the world. But the interest was always that, he was at a very young age, he was deeply spiritual. And so, he then ended up taking the second three-year course as they call it, a second long-term course in Sandipadi, seventy-six, seventeen touch. That Puja Swamiji was teaching, when Sinhianandaji used to be travelling a lot. And so, Swamiji says, that was a time when Indira Gandhi had declared emergency. Emergency was seventy-five to seventy-seven, I think. And so, so he said, and at that time he also got a, he had a job and he had to go on a voyage. So he ended up missing six months of the course. And so, I'm sure Swamiji has found memories, memories about these things, found or not, I don't know, but a lot of memories are there. And then in nineteen eighty-three, Puja Swamiji asked him and you know, about next steps and Swamiji has been studying since then, been going to Rishikesh, studying there etcetera. And then Swamiji, Swamiji said, I'm ready to take sannyasa any time. And then, because father is there and to be taken care of. And so, it was, it was only twenty years after that, that he actually, Swamiji gave sannyasa dixha to Swamiji. But we're all able to relate to Swamiji, you know, our facility to care of our children, parents and so forth. So so Swamiji was studying in Rishikesh and there he was learning from Taranandviji Maharaj. This, or Puja Swamiji's guru himself in Rishikesh. And so he was learning from Taranandviji and another Hariharatiirta ji from Kailash Ashram. And then, you know, the ashram at Rishikesh came up, Swamiji was involved in building the ashram room by room as he said. And then Swamiji also taught in Rishikesh, that probably, so it is Tarkasangraha and Vedanta Paripasha. He spent a good year there teaching these texts. And then came back Mumbai eighty-five-ish and then he was teaching there in Mumbai. As, not as a sannyasi, but as a prapuchari. And then organized Puja Swamiji's talks every year for twenty years. And Swamiji was raising funds at that time for our ashrams in Anikatti and Rishikesh. So you can see how Swamiji has been, has been there with Puja Swamiji ever since he came out of Chennai mission and building our ashrams. So he can tell us a lot of stories if we ask him. And then, of course, he formed his own organization, Ashriddya Foundation. And where he primarily teaches, primarily teaches Vedanta, he organizes conferences, even now he does. And of course, public talks are a norm and Swamiji was involved in organizing some interfaith conferences. But he says he, he lost the confidence he had in those kinds of discussions. Still is been very active in the community in this manner. And he was also involved in the construction of the Anikatti Ashram. And he has an interesting story. He says that that from Mumbai, he came with three thousand seats and saplings. Because our Anikatti Ashram was barren, so just barren, just one tree was there next to Swamiji's kutia. And it is barren, it's hard to believe, I told Swamiji, it's so hard to believe. Because when you go to Ashram now, it's all, it's a forest basically. And but, but because people sell trees, you know, for their own survival, that's how it was. So three thousand seats and saplings from Mumbai and Swami, Swamiji, our Sitaananda, I think, Sita Bodananda was there who, who then was taking care of the ashram. So now Swamiji is, is, Swamiji does not have an ashram as of yet, but now he's got a land and they are planning to start an ashram, work is beginning as we speak. And he expects to have an ashram in the, in the next couple of years. And and Puja Swamiji's own words about Swamiji. And he says, Puja Swamiji says, Swami Brahma Vedantandaji is a quiet, unassuming teacher. And, and so he makes for a very great mahatma, that is Puja Swami's own words. Puja Swamiji never uses mahatma at all, just like that. So you can see, that is how many years ago, since nineteen seventy-sixty-nine-ish. Swamiji has been only, only dedicated to Vedanta Adi Shankaracharya today. And on top of that, he's also, he's also a very outspoken person when it comes to Hindu causes, national causes, large causes affecting Hindu dharma in our sappradaya, Ashriddya sappradaya. So I, I look up to him on that aspect also. So recently, we wrote a, you know, Ashriddya sappradaya wrote a letter to the Prime Minister on the occasion of the tragedies that were occurring in West Bengal and before that was Bangladesh. So he's a, he's a big voice in these matters in the sappradaya. So with that, when I spoke to Swamiji, he happily agreed to talk to us on Adi Shankara Jaianti. And Adi Shankaracharya whom we all, we all respect, adore and think of and study, you know, so much can be said. And so we are happy to have him here. But before I turn it over to Swamiji, I wanted to see if Sinivasanji is here. And our trustee Sinivasanji is known Swamiji for, for a long time. So I thought he had a few words to say, Sinivasanji here? Okay, I don't hear him, maybe he can come back later. So Swamiji, thank you once again for joining us and we are looking forward to listening to you Swamiji. Friends, please join me in welcoming Puja Swamiji. Brahma Vedantandaji.
Thanks for that wonderful introduction. Since you already done the invocation, I'll straight away start off. Yeah, I know, it's been, when Jay Kumarji was introducing me, I was thinking of all those years. My days in the courts in nineteen seventy-six onwards. It's like what Swamiji said sometime about me. Vedanta was always there, because I met Swamiji after I finished school, other things came and went. Other things came and went, didn't matter. Vedanta was always there. Everything else was, by the way. Yeah. And if, as the title that you have chosen, you know, Pov Shankar Deshikamesha. Beautiful title, because without Shankara, there would have been no way that we would have got this authentic tradition. We are looking at the the Nathana dharma or Vedanta at its core from, if it's a historical perspective. When did it all start? Human teachers were the Rishis. I'm not saying the teaching originated with them. The human teachers were the Rishis, it started from Ishara himself. After that, the one who codified, gathered everything together. Because the Vedas were distributed all over Aryavarta. And also there were issues, whether the Vedas were three or four, Ravi Vidyah or Chatur. There's always a big debate and conflict in those days. Because Atharva Veda contains sections which was not fully acceptable to you. Like it involved a lot of aspects about martial arts, Danur Vidyah, Ayurveda. In fact, even Tantra was sourced to the Atharva Veda. To the source, the Rishi is like Mahatharvan Javali etcetera. So it was Vyasa who resolved these conflicts and brought it all together. With the analysis of Jaimani Sutras and Brahmasutras. After that, in the tradition, if you are looking at it. They were great teachers, of course, great teachers, some names known, many more unknown, because the Parampara kept going. And once Shankara wrote the Bhasya. It became easy for the students and the teachers. Because he put the written tradition down, or the oral tradition down into writing. So neither the teacher nor the student can go wrong if you follow the Bhasya. The whole tradition is available, of teaching is available. Of course, it is up to each teacher to make it contemporary, to his times. Because even though the message is timeless, the cultural background that people come from is what is there right now. So that much contemporateness the teacher has to bring in. And as a tribute to Shankara, what, what aspect of the teaching can I highlight? If you look at whether the Brahmasutra Bhasya or a Prakrana Grantha that is universally accepted as Shankaras, that is Upadesha Sahasrhi. You'll find Brahmasutra is introduced with Adhyasa Bhasya. So also if you look at the prose section of Upadesha Sahasri, it starts with Adhyasa. And if you look at any independent work of Shankaras is a great contribution to the Vedanta Parampara, it would be the Adhyasa Bhasya. So I thought, and without Adhyasa Bhasya, there is no Vedanta, actually. Whole problem in Vedanta is purely because of Adhyasa. Not in Vedanta, the pure prob, the whole problem in the human being's life is based on Adhyasa. So I'm assuming of course that everyone has got some exposure to Vedanta, otherwise at six thirty in the morning, you will not be listening to some unknown sadhu, not this teaching. I mean in Chennai, six thirty in the morning, Chennai or Coimbatore, South India, six thirty in the morning is quite fine. But I send the link to some people in Ahmedabad, they said, Swamiji, six thirty in the morning? They say, itna jyoti? So, okay. Especially because today is Labor Day, most, most of Maharashtra has a holiday. Anyway, jokes apart, the issue of Adhyasa. So Shankara defines Adhyasa in very simple terms. Atasmin Tat Budhi. Tat Budhi, the buddhi of that, in Atasmin, in not that. In short, take something as something else. You mistake something as something else, the most simplest definition of Adhyasa. And the most universal as well, okay? You mistake something as something else. So the moment we hear this, oh yeah, correct, we are used to examples, rope snake, shell and silver, a lot of these examples are available. And if you notice, most of these examples would be a Pratibhasika example. Because we are mistaking. The mistake is Pratibhasika. When you say a rope is mistaken for a snake, the snake is purely Pratibhasika. Not Vyavahar Yogiya. So the tendency is to look at it as something delusional. Not because Shankara meant it that way, in fact Shankara gives a lot of vyavaharic examples also. There was the tendency of the human mind. Because we will always interpret what we hear in terms of what we know. This is always the case, in any, any study that we do is interpreted in terms of what we already know. So that's why Vedanta seems to take something, because from what we know, we are to go into. And again, Vedanta is not descriptive, won't describe, Atma is like this, like this, like this, like this. In fact, that is one of the problems in Vedanta, if you describe it. The more descriptive words you use, the more finite you make a thing. The more adjectives you pile on, the more finite I think it becomes. Anyway, without going into that, coming back to that, yes, we are looking at it as a Pratibhasika thing. As something which is purely delusional. So everything Pratibhasika need not be delusional, but this will take it as delusional, because the mistake. But what about taking the earth as flat? A child takes it as flat? You speak to a, to a year old child and say earth is round, think the child will get it? A three-year-old child is not going to get it. And say, mommy, this is not a ball I am walking on, not a ball, not round, it's take it as flat, is Adhyasa. Because Atasmin Tat Budhi, you are mistaking a round, we are platter. And for centuries, in the Western world, it was taken as fact. Even though the Veda, Bhu, Gollam etcetera was described in our astrological sciences, it was described as Gollam, as round. In Euro, all the so-called Renaissance states, first world as they call it. Until, I think Christopher Columbus or someone, it was taken as flat. Though the scientists, Copernicus etcetera has talked about it earlier. Until Christopher Columbus sailed. It was taken as matter. In fact, the story of Christopher Columbus goes that he asked the helmsman, you know, the one who steers the ship. Go straight, keep going. And they were all scared, we'll fall off the edge of the earth. So he wanted to turn and Christopher Columbus as the captain of the ship, drew his pistols and kept it at that rate. Either you sail straight and fall off the edge of the earth, or you die to my pistol right now. Oh well, edge is not it comes, so let us keep going, edge is not come, let's keep. This is a story among the sailors, okay? Yeah. So they kept sailing, kept sailing, edge didn't come. So that is also Adhyasa, Ikthar. All right, that's fine, where does it concern Vedanta, where does it concern me? Because what is a human problem? One of finitude. You'll say, bondage, what is bondage? If foot clothing shelter is not bondage, none of us here are going concerned with that. Foot clothing shelter, where is that a problem for any of us? And that problem we serve, we have in common with animals also. Clothing may not, problem may not be there, but everything else is there. The problem is one of finitude, where I take myself to be a finite being. Therefore, feel unique, different from everything else. And this difference, this uniqueness creates a sense of isolation. Disconnectedness, loneliness. Because if you are unique, people don't always understand you. You can be having a family, friends. And they don't understand an idea that you have. For example, they may not understand your interest in Vedanta. Which is enough to make you feel isolated and lonely right in the midst of company. They just don't get what I have. In fact, all over the world, one complaint I hear from everyone is what do you understand? I'm sure all of us have felt it some time or the others. So this lack of connectedness and therefore isolation, loneliness. Let's say the first thing, especially if you're staying alone and you go out and you come back, what is the first thing that you do when you enter the home, after you put on the light and the fan out? The music, TV? Why? Are you seriously planning to listen to music? No, I like it in the background, TV, I like that sound and that image. Or today, that has been replaced by wherever you are alone? Hold on. His book, WhatsApp, why? You don't want to be alone. Then you say media addiction. Your sense of loneliness will drive you to something or the other. Media addiction, because media is available, I'm sure a caveman was also addicted to some things. Because if you feel disconnected, you want to feel a sense of connectedness. In fact, civilization grew because of the feeling of disconnected. Despite of that, we still feel disconnected. Look at it, people are lonely, disconnected, so you will form a society, club, a group. Like among my community, there is a joke. Five Malialis, you know? One Malali is equal to one Malali. Two Malialis is a careless samaj. Three Malialis is one careless samaj and a trade union. Four Malialis is two careless samajas and three trade unions. Five Malialis is back to five Malialis. It is a joke among my community, but there is some truth in it. Why? You come together because you feel disconnected, isolated. At the same time, you have a sense of independence, therefore you want to assert yourself. Therefore, in the organization, I have someone being president, someone being secretary, someone. I am important. Where does this come from? The human need for acknowledgement. Or being someone important enough, because I feel too less about myself as I am. Therefore, achievement, name, fame. Position or if nothing, I want to control my family, what they do and we all remember how our parents were towards us. They control us, hey? Oh, that is because South Indian culture, it is not South Indians all over the world. The need for control. Even though we say, we will reach, read something like Omar Khayam, the children are not your children. They are the children of humanity, they come through you, but they don't belong to you. What beautiful writing. And when it comes to my kids, you better do what I say, okay? Your freedom, freedom, etcetera, I can give it out to the house. And we all do the same thing with our kids also. Parampara goes on. Human issue. Human issue. Why does it all come? Because we are so self-awareful. And we are conceptual thinkers. Theory are here. One, we are very self-awareful as human beings. There's a high degree of self-awareness in a human being. Even in someone who, as the psychologist says, may not be very self-aware, but still there is a self-awareness there. Plus, we think in concepts. What do I mean by that? A cow will look at a field of grass and say, green grass, tasty, I've eaten it before. And there is nobody standing with a stick there, let me go and eat it. Very straight linear logic. A human being will look at the same field of grass and say, fertile soil. I can grow some wheat here. Then there is water, so I can put a nice mill. Grind that wheat into flour, wheat flour. Make it into bread and sell it in the nearby city. The cows saw the green grass and felt like eating it. A human being sees it and he becomes a venture capitalist, he will, becomes an entrepreneur, sorry, he becomes an entrepreneur. Concepts. We are not mere linear thinkers, we are conceptual thinkers. Now here comes the question, we are aware of ourselves. And in the vision of Upanishad, we don't know who we really are. There is a self-ignorance. Therefore, we create concepts about ourselves. I am like this only. Some are universal, some are special. There is a universal concept, I am a human being. I am like this only. And if I was Rejini Kand, I would ask, imagine Rejini Kand teaching Vedanta, and I'd ask her, why are you like this? Imagine Rajneesh Gandhi teaching Vedanta in a Raskalat, why are you like this? So, I am like this only. Universal, I am a human being. So this, I am a human being, I'm using it as a catch-all for body, mind, everything. I am human. And once I have the conclusion, uh conclusion, I am a human being. Which in the vision of the Shastra is a wrong conclusion. In the vision of the Shastra, I have to bring the Shastra in here. In the vision of the Shastra, you are nothing but Satyanjana Manantam Pram. Limitless consciousness. In my vision, what? I am this much only. I am human being is universal. Then I am special in some ways or the other. Depending upon my profession, my job, my learning, my this, whatever. What we call today as identities. I am a doctor, you know, I'm important guy. I heal the sick. That's one. Conclusion. Oh, I was a sailor, I sailed the seven seas. Another identity, another conclusion. These are special conclusions for each person. As common, as universal, we are dealing more with the common today. The special. Cases and its own issues are generally psychological in nature. The universal, the common, in the vision of the Shastra is something erroneous. Now look at the similarity. I don't know the rope, therefore I mistake it for a snake. I don't know what I am, therefore I mistake it with. The conclusion, something universal, I am a human being. Being universal. Is considered normal. Because everyone has the same. Error. If everyone has the same error, it is normal. Like in the days when everyone thought the earth was flat. The one guy who thought earth was round was impersonated. Last for me. He's going against the church. Copernicus. He is impersonated. To the universal, this is. Common. But this common thing is, in the vision of the Shastra, is pure adhyasa. You have made a mistake about what you are. Because of your self-awareness and conceptual thinking, you had a concept of yourself. This concept, like this snake is only a concept. Similarly, you have a concept about yourself, I am this much only. Pure adhyasa. I hope that sound is not disturbing you all, okay? That's a. Foil in the tree outside my. Apartment, yeah. I can't ask it to shut up. Hey, I'm taking a class here. I close the window, but still you can hear it. So this adhyasa we are talking about, this false notion about ourselves. And. It's something universal. And I am this much only. Because of that, all the human problems arise. The good thing that a human being do, us and the problems are also coming from this adhyasa alone. Atasmin tad buddhi. What I am is limitless consciousness and what I mistaken myself to be is human being. Oh, what? Now we come to Vedan. I am not dealing with adhyasa as an academic subject. I'm trying to make it as personal to your life as possible. So now, on this adhyasa, that means what? All my notions about myself. I am a human being, I am male, female. I am. Brother, sister. Married, single. Parent, child. All this is what? Based on the fundamental adhyasa, that I am not limitless consciousness, but I am this much only, a finite concept. So adhyasa is purely conceptual. Like the rogue snake, now you have a concept about yourself. But we tend to dismiss things as conceptual. A concept is a very, very powerful thing. The whole human civilization moves forward only on concepts. The dress you are wearing, all of you are wearing either a kurta or a shirt or a T-shirt or something, a top. Or a sari. What is that? A concept. Concept, yeah, is nothing but cloth. Is nothing but cloth, isn't it? So the different names are what? Different concepts. Another way of saying, namo rupaha. Various forms for which you are given names. And why do you have various forms? I can't even say various function because function is same. No, so yeah, aesthetics also comes as part of function, yeah, aesthetics, looks, fashion, whatever. So you have a kurta, if there is enough material, if you don't have enough material, you make a kurti out of it. I could never make out the difference between kurta and kurti, except a little. So I think some fashion designer didn't have enough cloth and therefore he made the kurta, found it short and called it kurti. And there are enough people who say, okay, this is convenient, this is convenient, of course. Especially when you're wearing jeans or something, either I'm talking of the ladies. Jeans or slacks or something, it's convenient. Then you see, it's purely conceptual. My whole life is based only on concepts, concepts of who am I? I take myself to be a human being. And. Right from childhood, of course. And your own natural inclination because of a sense of finitude, I want to become something. It's so natural, because if I am not, I am a finite being, and my true nature is to be limitless. My concept of myself is denying me my own true nature. Therefore, there will be a natural struggle to. Cover my true nature. But I don't know that it is in terms of knowledge, etc. Therefore, how do I know what to do? I have to become something. I have to fulfill my desires. A natural struggle. And society encourages that. You ask, always ask a child, you know, ten-year-old kid. Beta, what do you want to become when you grow up? And supposing the child says, I want to be happy. What do the parents say? Or the adults say? Yeah, beta, that's fine, but what do you want to do to become happy? Want to become happy, but what do you want to do to become happy? So, the whole question of becoming something. Based on what? I am a finite human being. Then you see, the first adhyasa is responsible for this whole thing that builds up on it. Your whole thing that you call civilization or samsara, it depends on how you look at it. Is based on this first conclusion. For those who have some exposure, more exposure. Iyam adhyasam pura scriptya, sarve pramana pramevahara, naukika vedikas. Shankaran, dadiyasa, based on the zelon, the whole thing goes. Become this thing. Civilizations come up. Positive, civilization coming up is good, but what type of a civilization is it that the question comes up? So, this adhyasa. As a human being, then the child grows up, achieving, studies, achievement. All based on this adhyasa. Then lonely, therefore. To get rid of this loneliness, I need somebody to love. Natural, it's human, universal. Therefore, pick up a partner. Depending on the culture, whatever it is, arrange that. Whatever process has been followed, fine. Both has its advantage, an arranged marriage or a love marriage, or what we now in India do, arrange plus love. You first introduce the couple and see whether it works out. So, whatever it is, whatever system you follow, each has his own advantages, each has his own limitation. And arranged marriage, the teamwork part is taken care of nicely because everything is matched. Intimacy. Love. That takes time to develop. May not completely develop also. In a love marriage, intimacy, all that part is developed well, teamwork, etc. Is poor. Both has advantages, both has disadvantages. So don't end up too much arguing which is better, okay? Both has its limitations, both has its advantages. Like somebody asks me, how can you marry a perfect stranger? I said marrying a perfect stranger is not the problem, it's imperfect one is the problem. All of us are imperfect, as functioning entities. Because we are all conceptual. So you pick up a partner and you think loneliness is gone? In the first flush of love, everything is beautiful. After that, after that, that love becomes hampered by the pots and. Fans of the kitchen. Hey, I have to run me, I have to manage the love, etc. Okay, okay, I have to manage my life. You don't have time for me. I'm doing all this, working so long only for us. All that, you know, for all of your experiences, you know. You don't need a sadhu to tell you all. Then you have kids. Make our bond, you know, as a result of our love, we have a same issue. Your whole life is topsy-turvy for the next three years. Even after three years, it ends. What about the terrible twos, terrible threes, terrible fives, terrible eights, terrible tens? School issues. Teenage issues, don't even talk. So I don't really understand what the teenage issue is because I run youth groups and they are perfectly great kids. No issue, as long as we don't fail them, they don't fail us. I don't have any issues with kids. I remember conducting a teenage camp with. More than a hundred youngsters and we had no discipline issues. No problems. And I'm not blind to issues that can come up, okay? Very aware for those issues. The question is how to build up structures and things to prevent those things. Prevent a problem from coming up. Not the issues from coming up, issues will come up, have to come up. Prevent it from becoming a problem, that's all. All this is from where? What we call human life. Basic adhyasa. Your kids and your grandkids, where does your responsibility stop? Okay, like yesterday, I attended a marriage. Someone who was very, very close to me, I know, I have known this lady since we were in school, she was ten years younger than me, my. And the kid has sat in a youth group. The. Father, who is known to me, we. He was a great union leader in the club and we had done some programs together. And he says. Hey, today, my responsibility is over. I said, wait, until the grandchild comes around. Then even, you will, you will lovingly take out. Beginning lovingly, later on, it's all like, what, this is second round? Then you achieve, and says. Supposing a Vedanta teacher comes and says, oh, this is false, what will you say? Hey, how can it be false? This is also valid. Yeah, but it's based on what? First conclusion, I am this much only. That means my whole human life. Is based on what? Adhyasa. Atasmin tad buddhi, I have taken myself to something I am not. In fact. Kabir, the Hindi doha, it says very nicely. Okay, I know many of you may not understand Hindi, but it's okay. I'll translate. Ah, insan ke bhad bhakti. Look at the bad lot, the human being. Ayandaas ke baahar is beyond imagination. You are nothing but the lot, the consciousness. Bandha nazar aate hai. You take yourself to be what? A bandha. Is seva ka. You are lord and master, I am your servant. I will obey all your rules, all your regulations. Fine, now because I'm religious. I have become devotee. Hey, bandha nazar aate hai. He says, you are, you are the limitless consciousness and you are taking yourself to be a bond, this thing, begging for mercy from the Lord. You are called devotion. Okay, I'm not against devotion, okay? Devotion has a purpose, the whole thing. But this is where it is. Can you imagine the limitless consciousness praying, saying, pahimam trahimam? What pahimam trahimam? A lord will look at you and say, you're going nuts? Are you crazy? You and they are one and the same, what are you talking about? Can you imagine the Lord listening to your prayers and? Imag- imagine personalize the whole thing and see what happens. What a champion is this? What is this? What nonsense is happening? Enna Raskala, what is this? It is supposed to be me and you are saying, you are telling me, pahimam trahimam. Okay, what is this? Devotion is also based on adhyasa. I would, it is a good adhyasa, it can help you grow out of that adhyasa. So it's good, it's positive aspect of it. Help you grow. Then you listen to some, some books here, there, you read some videos you saw on the TV, this, that, etc. Then yes, now I understand the human problem is one of finitude, one of ignorance, one of this thing, therefore. I will go to a teacher. I will go to a teacher. Study the Shastra for freedom, Shastra says. Jyana mevathu kai velliyam, knowledge alone gives you moksha. Let me go and. And let us say you are going to a tough teacher. Not a kind one like Jayakumar. You are going to a tough teacher. This Lord. This samsara is too much for. Adi hi devo brahmi. With samit paniya. Samit pani, please don't go today to guru with samit pani, you will know what to do with the firewood. You don't use firewood anymore. Like when I joined the ashram. I knew what it meant to run an ashram, because I was helping Chennai mission on those days. So when I went to the. Ashram, right enough. I emptied out my savings account and gave it to my girls. Kya karna sadhu man, this is. Hey, he is, everything I have is going to support me, things like that, let me give. And one another student came with firewood in his hand because he had heard the tradition. Because everyone praised him, actually, it is praise work because it exposes your tradition. But what will Songji do with the firewood? They are not using it for kitchen, in kitchen also those days, antang was seventy-six also it was S. But those days samit pani meant was important because firewood ought to be gathered or top down. So it always took a lot of time and effort. Like how it takes time and effort to get money today, it took time and effort to get firewood. That's why the samit pani etc. Then you can give symbolic meaning, keep it dry, keep it, all that, all that time. It basically meant I am willing to do what it takes. You go to the guru. And the guru looks at this guy, guy. Us kam vidivatupasanam, adi hi devo brahmi. Like all of us went to a guru and said that. And the guru looks and says. What a champion. What a champion. He and I are one and the same and he is trying to say, please teach me about Brahman. Brahman is coming and telling me, teach me about Brahman. Just imagine if the guru had said that, what will happen to, what will happen to all of us? He will scratch, this what is wrong? I'm coming with that seriously and the guru is dismissing me. Idiot, you are nothing but me, you are not different from me, what are you talking, teach me about Brahman, you are Brahman. Where is there to teach? So you become a student because of. Yes, sir. Because if there is no Adhyasa, no Avitya. Yes, I mean, I don't know myself. Because I don't know myself, I mistaken notion. Because I don't know this rope, I mistaken it to be a snake, so Adhyasa implies Avitya. So with this Avitya. And I am going. And the guru says, what is there to learn, you and I are one and the same. He is right, he is not wrong. Can you see he is wrong? He is not wrong. But he chooses to adopt the role of a guru, he chooses to adopt the role of a guru. That is also Adhyasa, deliberate Adhyasa, he knows he is nothing but your consciousness and what are you doing now? And now playing the role of a guru. What are you, Satyam Jana Manantam Brahman? What are you doing right now? Guru who teaching. Dnyosi, kruth kruthyosi, avanam de kulam chayava, praise the student of it. Yeah. The guru says that. Danyosi, kruth kruthyosi. Avarant ekulam chayava, your. Family is blessed. And guru has to say that because there will always be a little bit of guilt, you know. If I left my old parents alone and come. So this is deliberate Adhyasa, pashwadi vischa vishesh. Continuously deliberately he puts on the role of a guru and says, okay. What we say in Hindi, Hindi, you know, banda line me a gaya. The guy has come online, you know, he has come proper, okay? He has roamed around a lot. He has seen this, he has seen that, etc. Done a lot of nonsense in life, achieved some beautiful things. And now. Now in his maturity, he has come to study, very good. So the disciple is because of Adhyasa. The guru, the teacher also deliberate Adhyasa. That means what? My whole life is false. My whole life is false based on Adhyasa, how many of us are willing to accept that? If you accept that, you become great students of Vedanta. I am not joking. Songji, these are important to me, I am not saying Adhyasa is not important. I am not saying your roles that you play in your life are not important. Flat earth is very important. When I am putting up a building, am I thinking of round foundation or flat foundation? Flat, nah, it's important, I was. As it is buildings collapses because of whatever the contractor does. And imagine making it on round. What will happen to that building, it won't last. So it's important, nobody is saying. It is not important. It is vevahar yugya, valid for your transactional life, but the whole transactional life is false, based on a false premise. Are you willing to accept that? Family important, very important. Partner in life, very important, child, very important. Job, important. Taking care of your health, body, mind, etc, very important. If basic premise is false. You accept that. The moment you accept that. Vedanta becomes a fact in your. The moment you accept that, you will stop taking yourself too seriously. You stop taking the world also too seriously. But Songji, so much of problems, ah, we will do what it takes. Because we have to resolve these issues, big deal. There is a big deal about it. Things will come up, that is life, some issue or the other will always be there. Some issue or the other will always be there, so big deal, we will take care of it. Some good will be there, of course we will enjoy it. This is for my personal understanding. Basic premise is false. So that doesn't mean now because I have become a great Vedantin and someone is getting married, you go and say, hey, kya samsar me phas gaya? They are all getting stuck in samsara, please don't do that. Oh, congratulate them, wish them all the best, they need it, all the best wishes are important. They need it, okay, they are getting married, yeah, come on, if you don't need luck, what, thereas will you need luck? Pili ever after is there in fairy tales. But this fundamental thing. Your worship is based on Adhyasa. Ishra has nothing but Satyam Jana Manantam Brahman, what are you taking them as? Only thing is, these are deliberate Adhyasas, when you go into a temple, you think it's not a stone? The stone morti, yeah. Stone morti, what else is it? A piece of stone, no? Can you deny the fact that the linga that you worship is a stone? Can you deny that? Then what I do, prana prashta, it's all deliberate Adhyasas, invoke the divine energies. You think divine energies are not vithya, they are not Adhyasam? Energy is cosmic prana, you invoking. Irne garpa, cosmic prana. It's all part of Adhyasa, that invocation is also part of Adhyasa. But it is something that will bless you on the base of knowledge. It will bless you, take care of your life, so that the life problems does not injure you. And you learn and you grow until you understand, hey, all that is there is only Satyam Jana Manantam Brahman. That is all that is there. Until then you may need the worship, also worship is important, as important as your family is, if not more. As important as your job is. As important as all the important things in your life. And you come to the study of Vedanta, how important, study of Vedanta. You ask me, the most important thing in my life. But if you think like that, you may end up becoming a sadhu, okay? Or a full-time student. So for the timing, keep it as important as the other things in life. That's good enough. If you can keep it as important as the other things in life, you will make great students. If you don't keep it like that, then depends on what level of importance you give it. Like one thing in Bombay is you get various type of students, you know, come from so many different cultures, it is very cosmopolitan. So you will find people like this also coming to your class. Songji, I find this evening class very good, this is why? You know, two days. I. Play golf in the evening. Two days I play bridge in the club. Two days I am meeting my friends. And one day I am coming to Vedanta. So my life is very sorted. That becomes like time pass, time structuring activity. You don't know what to do with all your evenings, so what do you go to the class? So that is a casual interest. Not bad. Because somewhere you have to make a beginning, somewhere you have to make a beginning, so it's fine. But then you, the question is, you become a casual student, then. Then it takes about, at least if you stick around for four, five years, then you will become. You will understand your priorities etc and become a bit more serious student. That will happen, you know, bit more serious student you will have. But again, back to the thing. Even the serious student is based on Adhyasa, the casual student is also based on Adhyasa. At least in the serious student, the problem of life is more or less discerned. See, mumukshutvam everyone has. Even an animal has mumukshutvam. Why? Minimal move, mumukshutvam is there, avoid pain, go in for pleasure. That much mumukshutvam is there. Everyone has mumukshutvam, the moment you are struggling to get something, to do something better, that is a mumukshutvam expressing itself. In fact, I would say mumukshutvam was responsible for our evolution, if you accept evolution, at least of the equipment. Then mumukshutvam was responsible for it, not survival of the fittest. Survival of the fittest, the amiobad, the cockroach will survive a nuclear war, you and I will not. People are scared, will there be a war between Pakistan and India? It is there, let it be there. One reason for me not. Thinking Sanyasa earlier was I was in the second line of defense. I could be called up in it. So in India, it is not accustomed to call second line so much, but I was there. Big deal. So what? Songji, it is war, so. So what? You will die, Adhyasa, what is birth, there is birth, there is death, for limitless consciousness, all Adhyasa, birth and death. Muji, you can say like that, but what about all of us? So. Think like a warrior. Think like a warrior, what is that? You want to grow old, warrior thinking, okay? You want to become old and better than, okay? Who wants to become old, better than? Abto bilkul guda hu, gudi khakar jeetahu, now I am so old, I am living on princess only, not food. I want to be like, ah, who wants to be like that? One regret the Pandavas had, you know? When they made parikshit, the king and left to Himalayas. They had only one regret in all their lives. Remember what all they have gone through, the Pandavas. You think with winning the war and winning the king, that was a great thing, a great thing, they had to rehabilitate. Eighteen lakh warriors have died. Rehabilitate eighteen lakh families. Think it is a small job? A huge job, rebuilding the society, huge job. All that they did. And then now we are leaving for the Himalayas, one regret, what? We live to grow old, yeah. We are becoming old and useless. We didn't get Veera Gati. We did not fall on the battlefield and in Veera Swarga long, and regret. So think like a warrior, what war, what do you worry about? This is how you handle, now look at it, I am telling you two levels, how to handle Adhyasa, one is through knowledge, one is through your attitudes. So I have painted the problem, but the solution is this. So where your bhakti comes in, where your devotion comes in, the lifestyle of karma yoga comes. Attitude purely. Ishra arpanam prasadabuddhi. That should give you a tremendous amount of courage. No. Somehow I just can't understand this attitude, your bhakti is supposed to be, oh, dina bhavam. Yeah, dina bhavam is always there because at some time we are, we all feel like that. At some time we are, we always feel helplessness, that is human feeling. Sometimes in your life, you always feel helpless, before you pray to the Lord, cry out to him, fine, but all the thing, dina bhavam. If the Lord is with you. You are a devotee, right? That means the Lord is with you, what are you afraid of? Where is your courage coming in? Where is your courage? Like I, once I got a call from this priest. Okay, the tantric priest. And a great devotee. When he does his worship and he does the invocation, prana, prana, invoke, you know, he keeps a. When he does the puja. What do you call, bhagavati seva? Or any other navakali puja or something he does. Or the durga hum. He keeps a silver mask. Onto the lamp. Onto the lamp. That's where he invokes Devi. And when he is invocation, the moment that invocation is done, you will find the Devi's light shining. Devi's eyes are shining because you know that Devi is present right there. You can see it. You don't have to be a great bhakti, even normal people can see it. I've seen it all the time. This is this priest. This is how great a priest he is. When he invokes Devi, he comes. I'm not joking, I've seen it very often. And there was some. One of the people who came to him had got involved in a criminal case, so that man called him up and said, I have given you a reference. That I'm a good person. This is what happened. I got a correct call from him. He used to stay close and close to my place. Amji, I'm in a big trouble. Can you please come here? I can't leave this place and come, can you please? I said, this guy has helped me a lot. I said, what is the problem? Amji, I can't talk on the phone. Please come. I said, okay. If he is in trouble, I'll go and see what is it. I went to, I hopped into a rick. For kilometers and. I said, what is the problem? He is giving me this. What if the police come and question me? Almost felt like laughing, but because he was so worried, I didn't laugh. I said, you have been given as a character witness. What is your fear? You are not being accused of anything criminal, no? Even if you are accused of something criminal, what is the problem? Deal with it. Pray to your Devi. Devi manifests when you invoke. What happened to your courage? Don't leave it in the puja room. Bring it into your life. Lord is with me. What have I got to be afraid of? What is there to be afraid of? Tell me. There was a great boxer called Mohammed Ali. Maybe some of you have heard about him. Many people have heard about him. He used to always say. You know, he fought some of the. Biggest boxers in his tank. Characters who you or I get a punch from them, you will die. One punch. Those are the type of opponents he faced. Ken Norton, Joe Frazier. George Foreman. No, one punch, we will die. This is, and he used to always say, Lord is in my corner. I don't have anything to fear. Can we have that attitude as devotees in our day-to-day life? This is first stage of handing Adhyasa. Then you say Karma Yoga, Ishra Arpanam Prasada Bhuddhi. Today Prasada is, your name is going to get spoiled. There's Prasada. Because one of the biggest problems in India is what? What will people think? Isn't that the biggest problem in India? What will people think? Hey, they're too busy with their lives to think of anything about you. What will people think? Let them think what they want. You love your life. Name is only thing that I have. His name is given to you by someone without consulting. So. Even when he takes Sanyasa, you're not consulted. The name is given to you. I remember. Early morning, having a dip in the binga, Shurathri, and it's cold, it's that, etc. You're stark naked. Then the guru gives you your clothes. You just wear an angavastaram and a dosi in that cold. On the ganja's banks. Then he names all of you. And then I remember him naming me, you know, Brahma Vidhananda. I've been saving that name for you. Good name. Yes, Amji, Chery. So what happens if that name is spoiled? Let it be. Amji, it's a taint on me, you know? You taint yourself every day anyways, isn't it? I'm going to pull Jay Kumar's leg. You taint yourself, isn't it? There you like it. This is glories of Ishra. Correct? This is Vibuti. It is not ashes, it's Vibuti. Ishra's glory. So today is Ishra's glory. He has painted some, he has thrown some black paint on me. Achha hai. Ishra's glory. That's why I'm Vibuti. Anyway, God has given me a forehead where anything I put on the head, it's a last scoop. How are you like? Anything lasts. Half an hour, everything goes away. Prasada is not only for, it's not that when you go to the Prasada, every time you will get Shakrapakal as Prasada. Sometimes only some Vibuti, some ashes, Vibuti, yeah. Same today, I did all these same words, my Prasada Vibuti, etc. Today was, uh, Laddu, right? Tidriti, yeah, no? Prasada yesterday was very. Sarakrapunkal. That is one level of handling it. Other level of handling it is of course with that attitude. You mature out in life, you come. To Vedanta, you study. And in that study, you discover your Satyam Jana Mananam Brahman. That's the only thing that frees you from the problem of Adhyasa. But today my focus, it is not on freeing. In this talk, the focus is to accept that Adhyasa forms my life. My whole life is based on a false promise. Difficult to accept that. That's why Vedanta becomes difficult to understand for most of us. I mean, we understand. What do you call theoretically or academically or intellectually, whatever word you want to use for it. I don't like any of those words, but I'm constrained to use some words because it is not a fact of my life. I'll understand, I can give a talk on it, I can make a presentation, all that is fine. But why is it not becoming a fact of my life? Because I kept it in one corner. You know, Vedanta says like this, can you say I see like that, like a? Uh, not yet, Sam. That's okay. You are saying not yet, then what is preventing you? What is preventing me is I'm taking my life too seriously. If your life and the things that you do in your life important, very important. I will not take away importance of one thing that you are doing. It's important. Nobody says, no, it's part of your priority. If it is not a part of your priority, then you're wasting your life, okay? Therefore Karma Yoga involves fixing up your priorities in life. Vyavasyatmika Bhuddhi is nothing but priority. Okay, ultimate priority is Moksha. Vyavasyatmika Bhuddhi focuses on that, Moksha. But what about your life? Spending four hours a day on your phone, is it really priority? Four hours. You look at, some phones have that, they tell you weekly how much time was spent, average time spent, etc. Four hours, oh my God, what am I doing on the phone for four hours? Is it part of your priority? Is some entertainment is necessary? Of course. So what entertains is good. But four hours is not entertainment. Four hours of scrolling on your phone is not entertaining. You can't afford to spend that much of time on entertainment. Then what about listening to music and movies, etc.? That is separate. Netflix, Amazon. Everyone says there is no time, but what is the fastest growing industry in the world? Fastest growing is entertainment. That means your time for entertainment, but you don't have time for other things in life. So what is your priority? To set up your priorities in life and what, if you are living your life with priorities, everything you do is important. Is companionship important to you? You want to love and be loved? Yes. Then getting marriage is a priority? Do it. It's important for you. No, Sam, gee, I don't mind. Some friends are enough for me. I don't need anything more than that. Then it is not a priority. Simple as that. Do you feel the need to nurture someone and be totally responsible for the person and then learn to let go of that person as the person grows? I want to do all that. Then having a child is important. You already learned to do that, it's not important. No more your priority. So choose. Priority is the need behind the desire. You have a desire. What are the need behind it? People come and say, Amji, I want a job. Job? What do you want a job? You want to make money. Uh, you want to make money, yeah? Open a vada pav stall in Bombay. A fast food thing, you know? Sold for about fifteen bucks. This is like a bun-like thing of pav. And we put a vada inside. Not a meedu vada, your bonda inside. With some chutney, etc. Very popular snack. There is this guy near my home, he makes ten thousand rupees thirty. Ten thousand rupees a day selling vada pav. He's been there for the last twenty-five years I've seen him. I'm not joking. I know him well, he makes this one. You start with that. Amji, how can I sell vada pav? I'm an engineer. You're an engineer, bro. Why can't you sell vada pav? You said you wanted money. Amji, there's no social standing. Uh, so it's not only money that's important for you. Social standing is important. The financial independence, more than this money, and social standing. These are your priorities behind your stated desire, job. So identify your priorities and live by that, then everything in your life is important. But that doesn't prevent. Whole edifice is being built on one false notion that Adhyasa, I am this much only. The moment you clear about that part. Vedanta is the most natural thing to happen in your life. Most natural. Because that's the only thing that gives you an answer to this falseness of myself. And the problem of isolation, loneliness, purposelessness. How do you expect purpose to happen when your life is false? You, many of us experience it, no? Middle class, we are all middle-class people. We work hard. I've got two apartments in Bombay for both my children. Poor guy, he has really slogged it in life by two apartments in Bombay. It costs a lot of money. Okay, even in my place, I live in the suburbs in Chambur. Two apartments means he must have five crores with you. You made it. Good. And then both the children are abroad and they don't want to come back. My whole life effort in providing for my kids. Purposeless, right? Then what will I do with these two flats? Because one guy, there are many people like this who come to me. I say, sell it, put it in your bank or invest it so that your children will not have a problem claiming. Pat flat claiming, etc., is a long process. They won't have time for that. Put the money. Let them claim that. Put them as nominees, this, that. Put a bill, register it and keep it. That's it, finished, okay? Because they don't need you. They don't need the flat in Bombay. Purposelessness right there, no? Twenty years of work gone. What more do you need to feel purposeless? Forget other bigger things. Historically speaking. And I can say a lot of this. So in all this, you really want to find the whole thing? The problem of Adhyasa is solved only with self-knowledge. To know the truth, the snake won't disappear unless you see the truth. Similarly, my false notions about myself will not go completely. It can be negated up to a point, but it will not go completely until I know the truth about myself. So the whole effort in Vedanta is know the truth. To know the truth, I have to understand Avitya is a problem. But Avitya is not experienced problem. The experienced problem is Adhyasa. Avitya is a given. Nobody even thinks about it. I was born ignorant of the world and myself. As I grew up, I shared ignorance of the world enough for me to go to moon and come back. Mars coming back will take a little bit more time. Few more years, we'll be able to come back, to go to Mars and come back also. And along with that self-ignorance also there. Self-ignorance, I never had an opportunity to get rid of. So that became a given and that remained in my heart. And my whole life is based on the self-ignorance. Because of self-ignorance, wrong conclusion about myself. And then the whole question of life. The good, the bad, the ugly, everything is based on this. So when will that issue go? When I know myself. For that, you need to commit to Vedanta. So we can, if we can come to Vedanta because of friends, family, this, that, someone or the other telling me, and it, oh yeah, it's, rings a bell. It will become a fact of my life only if I recognize how Adhyasa plays in my life. My whole life is based on this Adhyasa. I'm living a false life. Only from the absolute standpoint, relatively, yeah, we're living valid lives. But from the absolute point, recognize this and not take yourself too seriously. Take the pursuit seriously, but don't take yourself too seriously. Okay, yeah. It's okay, it's okay. So when Jayakumar Almay said, I will highlight and personalize this Avitya issue of Adhyasa, you know? More than looking at it technically or scholarly manner, let me personalize it to each one of us. I mean, it's easy for me to go technical in it and say, okay, put different authors on it. That's. Personalize it, that's important. It's personal, because the Moksha is personal. Moksha is not a technicality. It's personal. I want to, I want to feel freedom from my sense of finitude, from my isolation, from my grief, from my loneliness. And Vedanta is the answer for that. By understanding Adhyasa and going through that to self-knowledge. I think with that, I said, whatever I thought I should say today. Is there any questions? Shoot.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ramji. Thank you. The audio was very clear and friends have.
I think you extended the time a bit, no?
So maybe, so extension also is Adhyasa Swamiji. So we are okay with that. So friends, you know, often we've talked about this Adhyasa and Shankara's Adhyasa Bhakshim. Or Magna Mahapas that he's written. And so Swamiji today. Without making it technical, there's Bhakshim is, is, is something we will study with prayers, with blessings from Swamiji, we will study it. And this is an introduction to us. And we've been doing it all the time. Vidya, Adhyasa, they're all similar, same also. So Swamiji said he has personalized the whole thing. And knowing this makes us stop taking ourselves too seriously. But yet at the same time, we must be serious in what we do, like Karbeyamavidhi, yeah? We want to invoke it every minute of the day. So we are serious also. So. It's a very beautiful area for us to study and mull over. So he talked about prioritizing, choosing properly, and then growing out also. Growing out is there. Because everything that we consider is important now is important. But at the same time, you know, it is an Adhyasa, it is an Adhyasa. Amji talked about all the false notions can be removed only by self-knowledge. And so. Because this notion being the fundamental cause for everything we do and for our search for freedom, etc. Thank you very much, Swamiji. Friends, if you have any questions, please ask. Ramji is there. Please raise your hand on the, on Zoom. Ramji, go ahead.
Not getting, sorry. Swamiji, Swamiji, Fermartananda was in your batch, I think, no?
Yeah, he was my batchmate. Yes, we are in the same batch. Yeah. Yeah, he was my batchmate, yes, we are in the same batch, yeah.
And you're, you're talking about, eh, we, class at six thirty. I used to leave at four o'clock at Dumbugali to listen to.
Yeah, I remember that.
That from Dumbugali, I used to come to listen at six thirty at, eh, Baran Drive or Badri Devi Jawan or Rosme.
I know you, Subramaniam and Andy and all, there are a few of those people who used to come early morning to attend.
I used to regularly attend when it was conducted in the public.
Yeah.
Swamiji Rabu, Swamiji Rabuji has spent a lot of years, eh, at the Advaita Academy in Pune.
And Vedanta Academy.
Vedanta Academy.
With Parsardi, for three years I was there. Right now, last ten, twelve years, I've been transcribing some Paramaratananda stocks.
Oh, very nice, very nice.
Putting it in Arsha Vinash.
Ah, so you're the person who's doing that?
Yeah, exactly.
Are you using the Advaita Academy link?
Not Advaita, Vedanta Academy, not Advaita Academy, Arsha Vinash.
Okay, Arsha Vinash, okay. There was some confusion about that, yeah.
I was, I studied with Parsardi in Vedanta Academy.
Ah, Vedanta Academy.
Alonavala.
Ah, with Parthusardi.
Yeah, who was right-hand of Swamiji Chinmayananda for many years.
Yeah, yeah, I know you were the manager of Ashram when we were there. I know you, I know you. Guess, daughter Sunanda, Sunanda was a child when I was in the Ashram there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sunanda was a very, he's a schoolgirl, started finishing school. Now his son has also joined, a son, Sunanda's son is also.
Dwarak, Dwarak.
Dwarak, yes, he is also.
I was there with Swamiji in his own Bangalore for three years.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you, Ramuji. Thank you. Prema, then Vedanta.
Namaskaram Guruji. I thought it was fascinating, hearing you talk about Adhyasa, which happens continuously at every step of living. But what most attracted me was the story of the tantric who worshiped Devi. And when Devi becomes real to you, then you realize the Adhyasa doesn't work. It, it, it somehow ameliorates itself to be something different. So, I have my, I have a question, but that has to be in greater length with you. So if I may have some way I can be in touch with you or contact you, where you can answer my, my queries?
Take my number from Jayakumar and you can get in touch with me. Yeah, no problems.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and this is valuable.
You're welcome.
Thank you, brother. Vedanta, right.
Namaste Swamiji, it was.
Namaste.
It was such a, you know, eye-opening talk. We really appreciate your time. Swamiji, I had this question, like, I have two kids and the the, the entire journey, we have been very, you know, it was natural to be loving to the kids and compassionate, everything came naturally, I thought. But now, the thing, the thought of everything's, it become, it's becoming very, you know, it clear that if everything is based on that ignorance limited feeling, right? So as you learn it more and more, eh, I had this doubt. Like was, when everything was based on this, was it not very pure? That love and that compassion was so very, you know, it came out of limitedness, it disturbs. It causes a lot of disturbance, like, it was not genuine, it was not genuine. So, and you are still not there to understand that genuine feeling, you are still not there. So somewhere in between, so how do you reconcile this?
As I said, it is very relevant. Within this world of Adhyasa, it is very valid, very relevant, it was pure. At the same time, the fundamental premise is what I'm questioning. That I am what I have taken myself to be. I'm a finite human being and the finite human being has become apparent, correct?
Yeah.
So that finite human being itself is a wrong premise. Now, that wrong premise is from the absolute standpoint. Once I take myself as a human being, I come into the relative endpoints, what we call vyavaharika. In that, in that structure, the love, the compassion etcetera is natural and very, very valid. In fact, that is the difference between certain emotions, like anger, hatred etcetera, are not in harmony with the ananda that you are, with the fullness that you are. Whereas love, justice, compassion etcetera is more in harmony with your true nature. So, when you feel those emotions, you are more in harmony with your true nature. So they were valid, everything is fine. We are only questioning the basic premise, that I am a finite human being. It is something like, supposing I'm acting on the stage and I manage to cry real tears without glistening, without any, etcetera. Are the tears real or not? Did you not empathize with some grief inside you to bring out the tears? Yes, they are valid.
Yeah.
On the stage.
Yeah.
Is it valid in the other part of your life?
No.
No. So similarly, within your life, all these emotions are valid. When you step outside to the absolute and to understand what you really are, then the whole thing is based on Adhyasa. That's why I said it is valid. Walking on a flat earth is important. Earth is flat is important for putting up a building. It is not factual, but it is important. Similarly, the love that you felt, parenting that you did, very important. Your health is to grow up, very important. What are the next step? Moksha for yourself, moksha for the kids also. It may take some time to get into it, that's okay. Moksha for yourself, that's the next step. So, all your parenting etcetera has got you ready for this knowledge. They were valid because they got you ready for this. The basic premise, the whole thing is based on Adhyasa.
Thank you, Swamiji.
Welcome.
Will it be possible for us when we are in Mumbai to come and meet you?
Please, take my number when you come to Bombay, give a call, you'll always be there.
Thank you so much, Swamiji.
Take care, all the best.
Go ahead, Prasad.
Namaste Swamiji. It's such a wonderful insight to us. Every day, listening to such talks would enhance our, um, actual, uh, coming to reality to our minds actually, which also improves our devotion, things like that. I'm so thankful to you today. So as, one of the Westerner writes saying that we, the most we fear is the death. And all our projects in life are around overcoming that fear. Whatever projects we make from birth to death. I don't know whether he understands Vedanta, but whatever you talked about today, it makes a lot of sense in the sense of Adhyasa, because of our body limitations and other things. So, we actually, I mean, what he said, all the projects we make, maybe, uh, if you extrapolate to Vedanta, it makes a lot of sense from Adhyasa point of view. And also you mentioned about, uh, the devotion, which is dina type of devotion because so, we are Maya dina, right Swamiji, so which means like we are subjugated Maya, so then when we, with this agnana when we are born, uh, we many of us like go to the god and ask for, I want this, I want that, our problems, our health problems. So that, that sort of Maya dina, that is where you mentioned about, so can you sort of, um, give some insight on that, like how, uh, people can overcome that type of, uh, I say Maya dina, to be Maya dina?
The only way to overcome Maya is through studying, to expose yourself to that Vedic teaching. And when I say everything like this, you don't have to feel guilty about it, because Krishna has said, no? Adharaha sarva evitiv, all types of devities are welcome. At least when you are asking for, to God, give me this, give me that. You're not meant to go to Godfather Nas, give me this, give me that. So, you can ask, that's not a problem. God accepts that. Only to recognize that, hey, this is Maya, therefore, give me this, but oh Lord, I will accept whatever you give as prasada. To bring in the karmayoga, then growth will happen. He is incomplete without karmayoga. Is the karmayoga buddhi of Ishara Arpanam and prasada buddhi that makes bhakti valid in your life. Otherwise bhakti is just an emotion. But that emotion in action is what helps you grow. And karmayoga, nothing but that emotion of that, bhakti and action is karmayoga. When bhakti enters, everything changes. But the devotion has to be extended to life, otherwise it will remain only in your puja. Extended to life, Ishara Arpanam, prasada buddhi, then the growth will happen. And you are exposing to the knowledge, how can growth not happen? I wouldn't be surprised if growth happens, I'll be surprised if growth doesn't happen. You know, forty years of teaching, I have seen that, growth happens whether you like it or not, it'll happen. Moksha may take some time, but growth definitely happens.
Actually, I, uh, come the childhood, I, the bhakti part, it's never, I would say clearly that I'm not close to the bhakti, but with knowledge, as I was going through, I mean, we attend every day, Jayakumari classes. Actually, it is actually moving towards bhakti now, because it's feeling like we are approaching everything as god. So, that knowledge is driving us to approach everything as god, because that's what Vedanta we are listening to, so.
In a, in a way through, see we isolate emotion, bhakti, intellectual knowledge.
Okay.
But you know, what gives you a rise, what gives a rise to an emotion? Phone in my hand. That, this is a phone is data, pure data coming, isn't it? This is a phone, okay. Then you say, now you're thinking, oh, it is a Samsung. It's a very good phone, you know, it's a nice balance between expense and performance. Not expensive phone at all, not like an iPhone or something, and, but it performs all the thing I want. If, now this is thinking, judgment, thinking. If you think like this, what is the emotion that will come up? I like it. So an emotion is often a result of a certain pattern of thinking. What type of bhakti you can have when you don't understand anything about God? That is why, to have bhakti for the masses, we give them stories, chronic stories. So that a vikary is understanding, because of that some bhakti will develop. When you come to Vedanta, the understanding of Ishvara is better, and because the understanding of Ishvara is better, your bhakti is also better. What is the culmination of bhakti? Bhakti is love for the Lord. What is the culmination of the Lord? When you and the object of love is one and the same. That cannot happen as an emotion, it has to happen as a recognition. Of an obtaining identity, Isha and I are one and the same entity. That obtaining identity has to be recognized as the culmination of bhakti as well. Where is Bhavasagar? It's gone, gone. I don't even have the fear of crossing the ocean of Samar. It doesn't exist. It's all Adhyasa, it didn't exist. Forget all this hide and seek. You and I are one and the same, you are there as I, no mind, you are there as I. So that's the culmination. It is expressed in bhakti language or expressed in Vedantic knowledge. Not that they are separate, there's the expression, this is the forms of expression. Bhakta Hanuman, Anjanaya. Bhakta, jyani, why he was asked at the end of the Ramayana, how, by Rama himself, how do you relate to me? And you know what he answered? From the standpoint of this body, you're Lord and master, I am your dasa. Tiva drishtya tu omshakah, as an individual, you're the whole, I'm part of you. Vastu buddhyatvame vaham, from the standpoint of the reality, you and I are one and the same. This is my clear-cut understanding. So what does he, bhakta, jyani, sevaka, functioning, he chose to serve. Functioning, he chose to serve. He chose to serve Sugriya also. He was far more powerful and greater than Sugriya. He chose to serve. The first samurai, we exist to serve. But you're the jyani, that's the role you play in life. After you know the truth, you deliberately can play a lot of roles. No more Adhyasa, I was just playing a role, no issues.
Thank you, Swamiji.
Thank you, Prasad.
You've taken, I've taken a lot of your time out.
So, Swamiji, typically our classes start at around six fifteen. And they end up at say fifteen, people like Prasad are many in our class, so we go on till eight fifteen, eight thirty, eight forty-five also sometimes. So we enjoy it, Swamiji, it's, uh, here is pretty dedicated to what they are studying. But we appreciate your patience also, Swamiji, and I don't know, I don't know if your classes are with.
And nice to see a young lady here, Supna. I've known her since I was a little girl, schoolgirl, or even earlier. Yeah, I met her mother years, I think we were in seventeen nine or eighty or something in project age, yeah.
Namaste, yes, eighty-three.
Yeah.
I think so, was the first time I met you.
Yeah. She was a little girl at that time, she was a young lady with kids of her own and nice to see her.
One, one son, twenty-six years old.
Yeah, one son is?
Twenty-six years old.
Wow, twenty-six. You're old enough to have a twenty-six-year-old kid, my god. And I've known her since she was barely ten-year-old.
Actually, yeah, eleven, twelve, I think, yes.
Yeah, eleven, twelve, something like that, yeah. Time flies. I must be older now. But when you're timeless, what is age?
Swamiji, Supna's parents live right, close to her, I live in Paimatu, in one of the senior citizen homes, you might know that, you might have known that.
Yeah, yeah.
They passed away about, about five, six years back, so.
Today's, yeah, second anniversary, today.
Oh, today's the second anniversary, wow, what a nice day. Yeah, my prayers for us, Sadhgati, she, she was. Yeah, she was.
Papa passed away twenty-twenty.
Yeah, twenty he passed, I remember that also. But it was great. I mean, even she has only a problem of the brain that she had, mind is fine, and she had this knowledge with her, she'd be on a journey well.
While cleaning up, I saw so many of your letters, they are the Uday Acharya's letters.
Oh yeah, those days when Rishikesh used to write, that was not the days of email and all, those things didn't exist in India. It was all handwritten letters in the eighties.
Yeah.
He came to Rishikesh for a trip to Gangotri, seventy-nine, seventy-nine, I think. It was intense too, write to me, you know, there was a Jumshitpur at that time. Write to me and I used to reply them, all over it. In Rishikesh, there was only other activities that was. There is also a lot of Vedanta questions, this, that, etcetera. There was also a lot of Vedanta questions that etcetera would be there in the letters, yeah.
Swamiji, Swamiji Chinmayananda used to write many, many letters in his own.
I know, I heard the whole book Vedanta through letters. Yeah.
Sometimes three hundred, four hundred letters, when he is one trip, he has to attend.
Yeah, you know.
Dhanyavada Swamiji.
All the best, Sukna, take care.
Swamiji, so nice to hear you could spot Sukna in the audience and.
Yeah, I, one or two familiar faces are there, but I don't, don't know where I've seen them, I'm sure it must be in the Coenbuth or Ashram or something. Quite a few familiar faces, like Prema, Sukna, Mira and all, the faces are very familiar. I mean, I used to come to Coenbuth or often, so. First batch I was there very often.
Nineteen ninety something?
Hmm, ninety, yeah, the ninety patch. First batch started in ninety October or something like that, so that time I was there often.
Seems Swamiji said, Swamiji, it seems Swamiji said, yeah, we're gonna have a camp, starting three year course, starting in October. And then there is no ashram, there is no thing, there is no road.
That's the power of sankalpa, yeah.
Thank you very much, Swamiji.
So, take care, all the best for everyone. Yeah, Om Tatsa, take care.
Thank you, Swamiji. Om pur namadapur namidampur naatpur namudachyadet. Pur nasyapur namadayapur nameva bishyadet. Om shanti shanti shantihi harihi. Om shri rup yonamaha harihi, oh.
Dhanyavada, sarvey.
Dhanyavada.
Thank you, Swamiji, please come back again. I'm sure students.
You have a nice bunch of students who are intelligent, who are asking valid questions, a very nice group, happy to be here any day.
Thank you, Swamiji.
Thank you, Swamiji.
Take care, all of you.
Thank you, Swamiji, pranam.
Pranamji.